Calling to order, the Town of North Branford Water Pollution Control Authority in regular town council meeting in North Branford, Connecticut, Tuesday, June 7, 2022. Start with the flag.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice in our own.
All right. All right, Michelle, if you would, provide us a roll call, please?
Sure. Mayor McMillan.
Present.
Deputy Mayor Zampaano.
Here.
Councilor Abelson.
Here.
Councilor Angeloni.
Here.
Councilor Diamond.
Here.
Councilor Downs is absent. Councilor Code.
Here.
Councilor Mace.
Here.
And Councilor Lee.
Here.
Okay, thank you. I will accept motion to accept the minutes of previous meeting, May 17, 2022, Town Council Workshop, 6:00 P.M.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Councilor Angeloni, seconded by Councilor Diamond. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Stand? Okay, thank you. IMP, May 17, 2022, regular town council meeting at 7:00 P.M.
So moved. Second.
Again, thank you, Councilor Angeloni, for the motion, seconded by Councilor Diamond. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Stand? Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make several motions to amend the agenda. The first one is I make a motion to amend the agenda to add item 11A, resignation of Richard Simmons, and item 11B, appointment of Jacob Manor to the police commission.
Second. Okay. And B. Okay. We have a motion on the floor, Councilor Angeloni, seconded by Deputy Mayor Zampaano. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Stand? Okay. Thank you, Councilor, appreciate that.
And the other item is I'd like to amend the agenda to add item 13H, hearing officer for ordinance number 260.
Second. Okay. We have a motion by Councilor Angeloni, seconded by Councilor, oh, sorry, by Deputy Mayor Zampaano. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Stand?
Hearing officer for ordinance 260. Ordinance 260.
Correct.
Thank you.
What was that, H?
Yes.
H, yes, H, 13H. Okay. All right, see what time we are. And remember, folks, we have a pre-planned 7:30 public hearing, so wherever we are in the agenda in the next three minutes, we do have to stop for that public hearing, but we will move forward and try to, you know, push ahead as quick as possible. So we're on to the Water Pollution Control Authority agenda. Item 3, correspondence, citizen statements. Are there any citizen statements for WPA? All right, seeing none, we're going to move on to unfinished business. There's none. Item 5, new business, sewer flows from Lake Gallard Water Treatment Plant, I believe, is that Victor's going to be? Victor, is that a two-minute conversation or do you want to?
Definitely not.
Okay, so why don't we hold off for a second and we're going to come back to you on that? It's seven.
Hopefully not a 20-minute, but yeah.
I didn't know how fast you talked, if you had it in a minute and a half.
No, no.
Okay, so why don't we, why don't we hold off for a moment and what we'll do is we'll move over to the public hearing. Public hearing is set for 7:30 P.M. regarding increasing purchasing threshold. Can we start that a minute early, Councilor?
No.
No? Okay. That's the short answer.
Can we do this one? Can we do P? B?
Mayor, I got one I can do for a filler, if you, if I could indulge the council. I was going to add it to my agenda, to the town manager's report, but I'd like to introduce Judy Haley's here this evening, and she is the interim tax collector, has really done a great job for us, is a great fit for us, and she's doing a remarkable job filling in for us and keeping us, you know, through transition until we find a new, new one. And I wanted to have her come in to say hi and be able to put a face with a name, and thank you, Judy, for coming tonight.
Judy, thanks so much.
Thank you.
Thank you for filling in such a quick spot.
My pleasure.
We appreciate it tremendously.
Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to help out.
By all means, pleasure to have you.
You don't have to stay for the rest of the meeting. You're more than welcome to, but you don't have to.
It's an exciting meeting.
It's a pleasure to meet you.
I'm sure, I'm happy to attend.
So it's up to you. You can leave whenever you would like.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Nice to meet you.
Likewise.
Thank you.
All right, looks like we're right about that time here, those perfect filler. Thank you, Michael. We're going to call at 7:30 P.M. You're there, yes, for the public hearing regarding increasing purchase threshold. Do we ask for a public statement?
No, you can just ask, just indicate to the public that the public hearing is now open, if there are any members of the public who wishes to speak.
Yeah, you want to read it?
Yes, please.
Yeah.
Thank you. It should have had it here, but it may be here, I don't know. All right, notice of public hearing, 7:30 P.M. The North Branford Town Council will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, June 7, 2022, at 7:30 P.M. in the North Branford Town Hall, Council Chambers. The purpose of the public hearing will be to hear comments on proposed ordinance number 2022-2 entitled "Purchasing," which amends Chapter 84 of the Code of the Town of North Branford as summarized below. The proposed amendments to the purchasing ordinance increase the bid threshold from $7,500 to $15,000 and removes the following wording, in quotations, except for the Public Works Department, which shall be $15,000 or more, unquote. A copy of the proposed ordinance is on file in the town office of the, I'm sorry, in the office of the town clerk and posted in the town's website, dated at North Branford, Connecticut, this 19th day of May, 2022, with the identity MMC, North Branford Town Clerk. Is that what's the original, obviously, correspondence on that? So the hearing is now open, if there's any members of the public that would like to come up and speak in regards, you're more than welcome to do so. How long do we typically, obviously, there's no one going to be pulling up, so do we have to?
Say it one more time and then close the hearing.
Okay.
Does that include council members, or we have time to discuss?
You're going to have time to discuss before you vote on it, yes.
Correct.
You don't have to speak as a member of the public.
Okay, so under guidance from our town attorney, I'll ask once more, is there anyone from the public that would like to have, you know, bring your comments forward on this particular hearing, public hearing? There we are. If you would, please state your name and address. Thank you.
Al Rose, Forty Valley Road.
Mr. Rose, how are you, sir?
So the, with the Public Works one, how many times can he spend $15,000 or more during a year? And I think everyone in the room trusts Randy, but someday we may have some new retired guy out of somewhere that comes in here and is like, holy cow, I can give my buddies all this work at $15,000 a clip, and he can do it forever. So I would just think about that.
Okay, that's correct. But it's not necessarily, that was something we already changed, was already changed a while ago.
Well, it's, well, it's to $15,000. I think Al's point is if they split up into $15,000 increments, how many, there is no, there is no regulation here, because it's just, it's just the bid threshold, so it's per item, so if it's a certain item, he can go up to $15,000 without going out to bid. If it's a new item, a different item, that's a completely new bid, and he has another $15,000.
Do it again. It's an astute observation that we are comfortable with the people that are currently in these positions, but in the future, someone new, we may not have that same level of comfort. So it's something to consider when we're, when we're thinking about threshold and changing thresholds.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Mayor, this is.
Oh, sorry, yes, Councilor Angeloni.
He still has his budget that he has to contend with, so he can't just go and spend it. He just needs to go and spend over on what your budget is.
Correct.
So he's not, it's not, I can't just give it to him and him and him. You know, there is a budget that he has. There's a limit, there is a limit that he can spend, so.
But I guess that brings up the point, is there anything in the ordinance that states that a purchase cannot be divided up into multiple purchase orders under the threshold?
Let's ask our town attorney, Town Attorney, your clerk.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. There is a provision in Chapter 84, under 8413, formal contract procedure, and it talks about purchase or contract for purchasing, and it includes, in that definition, a continuing order or a contract for the purchase of the same commodity or service over a period of time. So if one was providing a certain service, you couldn't break it up into a bunch of small contracts to exceed the amount. There is that protection we have built in already to address Mr. Rose's concern, I think.
Good. Okay. Is there anything in there that addresses the "or more"? That, that grayness worries me a little bit. $15,000, did I hear you guys correctly, $15,000 or more?
I don't know.
It does read like.
It was always $15,000.
Right.
I don't know where you are more.
It says, removes the following wording, so it's removing that wording, so the bid threshold.
It says, removes the following wording, and it says.
Because this is to make it $15,000 for all departments, and it would remove the wording, Public Works Department, which shall be $15,000 or more, so the, the proposed ordinance change is increasing from $7,500 to $15,000 for all departments, including Public Works, and it takes out the word $15,000 or more.
Correct, because Public Works is $15,000 or more, the rest is $7,500, so this makes everyone $15,000 or more. So the minute you hit the $15,000 as the amount of the purchase or contract, $15,000 or any amount higher for any department puts you under this requiring the competitive bid.
Yeah, so it's not necessarily, the way it reads is, it's not, it's anything from the point, $14,999, 99 cents, yes, but anything above that.
Correct.
Right.
Okay. Okay, any other questions or thoughts? All right, seeing none, I believe we were, are there any other, I'll ask again, any other comments from the public that would like to speak on this matter? All right, seeing none, I will accept the motion to close this public hearing.
So moved.
Second. All right, motion by Councilor Angeloni, seconded by Deputy Mayor Zampaño. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Stand?
It's closed at 7:30.
Closed at 7, yeah, 7:30, 6:00 P.M. Thank you. Okay. All right, Mr. Bennie, you're back up.
Thank you.
Mike, you want this back?
Yeah.
Back to the WPCA agenda for item 5A, which is the, under new business for sewer flows from the Lake Gallard Water Treatment Plant. This facility is located just west of Town Hall at 725 through 765 Foxen Road. Again, it's owned by the South Central Regional Water Authority. The revision of an approval request letter came from Amy Velazquez of the Regional Water Authority, was received on March 30 of 2022. The request was for an adjustment in sewer discharge flows from the Lake Gallard Water Treatment Plant to the North Branford Sanitary Sewage System. The original agreement was entered into between the Town WPCA and the RWA in 2001, back in 2001. In recent years, it has, for the most part, been a yearly occurrence that the RWA has amended or added addendums to the original agreement, and the, under their current request, the RWA is seeking a new two-year approval, being from July 2022 through June 2024, to revise the permitted discharge from the present approval, which is for 77,000 gallons a day of sewage flow to our treat, to our collection system, to an annual daily flow of 110,000 gallons per day. They are not proposing to change the peak flow per day, which is going to stay a possible peak flow of 140,000 gallons per day. The RWA reports that the increases are due to, to, or is based on how often they need to clean their clarifiers, so the fact that they're cleaning the clarifiers more often adds more water to their drying beds, more wastewater to the drying beds, which then adds more sewage flow or wastewater to the, to our collection system. The proposed increase in the average daily flow will incur an increase to the RWA payment to the town. The new payment over the two-year period would be $18,653, the current payment that they're making, based on their agreement, their three-year agreement revised from last year, is $11,060, so basically, the payment to the town is going up from the RWA from $11,060 to $18,653, and this is basically for the town to reserve, then, this capacity in our collection system. They also pay at the commercial rate based on how much flow they add to the system every year, so there also is that normal fee that every commercial entity pays in town based on the metered flow to the system. The RWA must also obtain approvals from the Greater New Haven WPCA, being that this portion of the system does go to Greater New Haven WPCA Treatment Plant, and also from DEEP for the continued discharge at this revised amount. I have included a suggested motion in the packet, which basically is a rewrite from previous years that could also be reviewed by the town attorney before any, you know, based on a potential approval from, from the WPCA. There's any questions or comments?
I have a couple of questions. We can, we can handle that, that increase in the flow, that doesn't affect the town in any way?
Right, so based on the fact that we already had that reserved maximum capacity of 140,000 gallons per day, they're not anywhere near coming close to that, so that basically indicates that we have enough capacity in the system to handle that.
So if we are looking at expanding sewers on Route 80, whether it's going down that way, or going towards East Haven, or going up towards Guilford, would that have any effect?
So, so this is a, this is a collection system B, which is the system that goes to East Haven or Greater New Haven WPCA, and the section for the Route 80 expansion is Section A, which goes to the Branford Treatment Plant, so shouldn't have any effect on that.
Okay. And what, did I understand that a lot of us have something to do with, they have to improve or redo their equipment?
So, yeah, they've been talking about equipment upgrades over the past few years, and I think it's a, you know, process that they go through with, with DEEP as far as when and how that all takes place, and I'm sure they have, you know, similar funding issues that they have to get through as far as how those upgrades would proceed.
Thank you.
Okay, well, I'll.
So do we need to vote on this tonight, or we could have it reviewed by the town attorney and vote on it at a, at next month's WPCA meeting?
So I believe we, I did, I don't know if the town attorney has had the chance to review the actual motion in its entirety, but I did review this scenario with, with him already in a separate meeting, but whatever, basically whatever you folks see fit for the situation.
But this is effective July 1 of 2022?
Yeah, we are up against a little bit of a timeline, and I apologize for that, because there were, you know, some issues with just coordinating all this and getting it under review through our, through our new town attorney.
Do you need more time?
If I could talk to Victor for one minute, I think I can.
Okay.
Yeah.
So they, so they agree to pay per year for the reserve capacity, that's only for the reserve capacity? This is still staying in place? Yeah, that's fine, okay, that's, this is fine.
It's fine.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. All right, then I'll accept the motion as stipulated by Mr. Bennie.
Okay, so the suggested motion is on page 47 in our tablet. I'm not going to read the whole thing, Michelle, you have a copy of it.
I have it, yes, thank you, I'm sorry.
So I would like to make a motion, to move the motion as suggested by the town engineer, which is on page 47 of our packet.
Second. Okay, motion by Councilor Angeloni, seconded by Deputy Mayor Zampaño. Any discussion? Seeing none. I'm going to vote, I should guess that. Okay, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
I'll be quick.
Stand? All right, passes, thank you. Okay, and on to the second, the proposed extension of agreement for operations, maintenance, and management services, Town Sanitary Sewer System, Viola Water, North America? Viola? Is that what I was saying?
Violia, yeah. So again, again, so on to the next item here, I have the, this is for the extension to our current agreement that we have with Violia for the operations, maintenance, and management of our, of our collection system, of our sewage collection system. I have our Violia project manager here with us tonight, Scott Beany, he's assigned as a liaison to the Town of North Branford, should there be any questions or potential clarifications based on what I'm about to present you. He's the, he's the professional in this matter, and, all right, so Violia's been working under this agreement for the past eight years, since September 1, 2014. They've been performing the town sewer operations work for the past 17 years, since 2005. They've been doing a great job, and the town has developed a comfort level with their qualifications and overall performance. The initial term of this agreement was for four years, with a potential for two four-year extensions to that agreement. So the first four-year extension back in 2018 included a mutually agreed upon annual pricing increase of 0% for the first year and the annual cost for the service to 2% for each of the following three years, years 2 through 4. The current fee that we pay to Violia for, for this year, the year that we're in, is That boils down to approximately $15,815 a month, and includes the annual facility operations and maintenance program. It also includes TV inspections to 10% of the system and hydrojet cleaning to 20% of the system. I have an extensive, somewhat of an extensive list of other things that they do per the written agreement. There are no changes proposed in the services for the proposed four-year extension, however, Violia is proposing the annual pricing increase of 3.5% for the first year, and then 3% for each of the following three years, years 2 through 4 for this four-year extension. That boils down to an approximate average of $6,177 per year, you know, above and beyond what the, that, that annual cost that we're paying already. So again, I'm just going to kind of go through some bullets here that I have for the services that Violia provides to us. Again, there are 24/7 on-call operational coverage for personnel and equipment. They monitor and maintain all five pump stations and four metering stations. That includes all the electrical and mechanical equipment for each of those pump stations and the, and also the generators that are associated with those pump stations. They respond to all alarms and emergency situations associated with the collection system, the pump stations and the metering stations. They provide a monthly activities report, which includes the flow meter readings, pump hours, the weekly round orders, which is each of their visits to each of the alarms and the regular calls that they make to each of the pump stations. It's a, they provide a status summary on a monthly basis for each of the five pump stations and the four metering stations, basically indicating to me if there's any ongoing problems with any of those stations or, or upgrades that we need to consider, which we brought to you recently, over the past few months, some of those proposed upgrades that we've gone through at the pump stations. They do ongoing training and education for their personnel, which is an important part of all this, because we do have to keep up with OSHA requirements for a lot of these systems. There's enclosed space, training that their personnel needs to go through, and also, this is just a couple of the trainings that I know about, also lockout, tagout type trainings for any problems with any of the electrical components or systems associated with each of the pump stations. They purchase and maintain vehicles and equipment necessary to operate the system. They complete an annual review of the system and provide recommendations around, this is something that's important, around the budgeting season, so I can incorporate any of those changes into the budget for that upcoming year, or come up with extended budgets for years to come. They maintain a spare parts of inventory for different parts of the system. Again, they clean a minimum of 20% of the system, which is, includes the wet wells and pump stations are cleaned as required. Going on, I'm sorry, just a little longer than the last. They do routine maintenance and cleaning of all buildings associated with the sewer system, including the grounds and maintenance, janitorial services, and snow and trash removal. They calibrate the four meters that we have every six months and provide documentation to the town for that. The annual TV inspections that they do is, again, 10% of the 38.5 miles of the collection system and manholes, and they do CBD, or Call Before You Dig, markouts for, those are after-hours and emergency calls that we might get and holidays, any of the ones that I can't cover, which I have been trying to keep up with any of those as they, they come in. Violia is able to provide a competitive pricing, because it also provides services to the Town of North Haven, so we're kind of in sync with North Haven's collection, with Violia providing similar services to North Haven and their collection system and their treatment plant. The current contract is considered valuable, because it maintains consistency and continuity, and I have some, some other information, but I don't know if it's necessarily pertinent. I did some research on, you know, towns that provide their own, or Branford, our neighboring town, which provides its own on-call service for, or they do it in-house, their on-call service, and even though they have a treatment plant, they also use the service for their collection system, and it does come out to be quite an extensive group of employees that they have. I think they have upwards of 11 employees with salaries, benefits, and all the equipment and vehicles that you would imagine would, would come with operating that type of system. And again, understanding that it is a little bit more of a complex system where there is a treatment plant involved there. So I also have a suggested motion, which basically is my, my last paragraph of the memorandum to Mike Paulus, as far as the agreeing to this extension, or this extension to the agreement, based on a review of the, based on formulating an addendum, a written addendum, and then having the town engineer, or the town attorney review that addendum.
Victor, is it, start with, is it Section 2, the term of this agreement, is that the word?
Sorry?
Is it the last paragraph of your memo? Is the motion?
Yeah, right, right.
Can you read the first words?
So, that the WPCA approved Violia Water, North America to provide operations, maintenance, and management services for the Town of North Branford.
I might suggest a slight change to that motion.
Okay.
And a question to you first is, you know, the way this is proposed, you would be approving a contract extension subject to final approval by the town attorney, in which we draft everything, and this has it coming back to approval again by the WPCA. Do you want to see it again once, do you want to approve it tonight for us to draft it and then see it again with these same terms, or are you approving it under these same percentage increases that Mr. Bennie spoke of? We'll draft it.
And I can add the timeline.
I know if you need it back again, that's fine.
I can just add the timeline to that, that does give you some time to do that. Our timeline is to September 1, 2022.
Yeah, so, so.
Do you want to see it back? Is the question, do you want to see it again once we have a final contract? Basically, it's a contract extension, we're just extending the contract.
Yeah, so I think.
That's your call.
Prepare it.
Yeah, bring it back to us to look. Yeah, bring it back to us to look at.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Yeah, so we'll just.
Table it for now, put it into.
Table it until you get the final contract.
That's fine, however you want it.
I mean, we're fine with the terms that are in there, so you can just adjust whatever you need.
Mr. Mayor?
When the, when Counselor drafts the proposed extension of this here thing, I would like for him to include the page with all the prices on it, so that we have a clearer understanding.
That's standard that that table has been included in the amendments, right?
Yeah, just want to make sure.
Okay, we'll table that for now, and we'll revisit it once town attorney has the opportunity.
We'll have that for your next meeting. We'll have that next meeting for you.
Perfect, that sounds great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And that will be, that's okay, the next WPA is going to be July. So that should be fine, Victor.
So WPCA only moves once a month.
Yeah, that's okay, okay.
Yeah.
Okay? All right, we're going to move.
We have to formally table it, or no, we can just table it?
We just table it, right? We don't have to formally table it.
Because it's a proposed.
It's new business, so.
We'll just go to next month.
All right, and we're going to move on to item six, citizen statements and petitions. Are there any citizen statements and petitions, just per the WPA? All right, seeing none, we're going to move on to the regular town council meeting. Item seven, reports of committees, boards, and commissions. Item A, economic development, Roger Stallway, monthly report. Mike, can you, or?
Yeah, sure. His, his report is in there, and I was able to attend for the first hour of their meeting before the permanent project building committee started, so we discussed just projects in terms of the high school, PD, and other building projects, talked about ARPA, and they had some questions about that process and the timeline for that. Certainly interested in that because of the implications possibly for the council discussing the extension of sewers and potential economic impact and development for Route eighty. They felt it was pretty exciting stuff, and just interested in knowing the timeline for that. The chamber director was there, D Jacob was present, gave them an update on what is going on. Roger had mentioned solar project. They had a very lengthy agenda, but I was only there for the, for the first hour. But I can tell you that I did put up a, an award in terms of the CEDIS award that I left with the mayor there that Roger had brought back today for silver recognition, for silver credit for planning. And he's also attending tonight the open house for the Advanced Manufacturing Technology Center in Clinton. I believe he's going with the superintendent to attend that. So a lot of things that they're working on, and they're very engaged and excited about the summer months.
Great, thank you. This is the award, if you might zoom in a minute for a moment.
And at some point, still waiting.
Self-registered.
Waiting for the date on a, sort of an opening, if you will, for the, or ribbon cutting for the solar farm, and that's hopefully in the works, and we'll be able to announce that sometime later next month. Maybe even this month, but.
That sounds good. Thank you, Michael.
Sure.
All right, on to item B, parks recreation, Councilor Nigali.
There was no meeting in May, and the next meeting is June twenty-eighth.
Okay. Item C, police commission, Counselor.
The next police commission meeting is June thirteenth, next Monday.
Item G, fire commission?
So, over the past, little over a month, been busy, there's been a lot of, a lot of meetings, not this past fire commission meeting with the one before, there were some awards given out, just want to acknowledge, on three eighteen twenty-two, there was a, it wasn't considered a save, it was a spontaneous circulation, they were able to get the person, bring him back to life, basically. And paramedic Ryan Zimmerman, paramedic Keith Kerr, Officer Kristen Fitzgerald from the PD, and then they, this was the one that took place right outside on Route eighty at the intersection there. While all that was going on, our chief, Anthony Esposito, also ran out to assist and ended up driving the ambulance in, and although they weren't able to fully save the individual, the families were very happy that they were given a little extra time to spend and say their goodbyes to, to the family members. So they were given awards for that, and it was, this is something that hadn't happened in the past, it's something a little bit new, and I think it's great. One of the, one of the participants had family members there and stuff, and one was a little kid, and it was, it was good to see the pride in the, in the child's eyes when the mother received the award, so. The second one was on four twenty-two, again, spontaneous circulation, again, Company Two members, Carol Newby, Walt Munzer, paramedic Ryan Zimmerman again, paramedic Jenna Jennings, Officer Kristen Fitzgerald again, same thing, they all received awards as well. And, you know, our members just continue to do a great job, day in and day out. I was also invited to some installation dinners and meetings for the different companies. Company Two installed Captain Tom Hart, First Lieutenant Matt Molo, Second Lieutenant Gary Peterson, Third Lieutenant Artie Hausman. Company Three, Captain Corey Roberts, First Lieutenant Andrew Sherwood, Second Lieutenant Tyler Bailey, Third Lieutenant Tom Rack, Fourth Lieutenant Alex Stasic, and then Company Four, Marie was there that night too, was the same night as the blessing of the new ambulance, which was nice, it's a, it's a beautiful vehicle, and it's four-wheel drive, which we haven't had before for our ambulances, and everybody's familiar with our topography in this town, it's definitely a benefit to the town to have that, that vehicle. And the, the officers are, Jim Buddha is the captain, First Lieutenant Sal Mercario, Second Lieutenant Laura Berg, and Third Lieutenant Liz Connolly. And then the other night, Monday night, last night, they were all running together, the ambulance committee met again, and we talked about the upcoming installation of the second ambulance come July first. There are some policy issues that we've been discussing, some scheduling issues, and we're kind of working out the kinks. We're going to meet again on the twenty-ninth to finalize, you know, exactly how we're going to put things into play with the second ambulance, but a lot of great topics were discussed, a lot of good ideas were brought up, and I think, you know, obviously it's going to be a big benefit to the town. One of the other things that was brought up during that meeting, I think that is worth noting, is the chief has started a deeper dive into the way that we bill for things to try to recoup, make sure that we're recouping the total amount that we can from the people that we provide services to. And there's, there's definitely been some things identified as far as information that we send in to get money back from insurance companies. Some, sometimes there's information missing, we don't get paid because the information is missing, so we're going to start doing a little bit more quality control on that. The PCRs that we provided to them are going to play a part, or that we hope to provide to them are going to play a part in that, where they can start taking pictures of insurance cards and stuff like that, so. I know that was a lot, we have a lot on the agenda, but it was definitely important just acknowledging all our volunteers and what a great job they're doing, so. That's it.
Thank you, Counsel, that was a very thorough report, appreciate that. Okay, on to item E, planning and zoning commission.
Planning and zoning meeting scheduled for June sixteen could have been canceled. They're putting together an agenda for June twenty-third.
Okay, thank you, sir. And F, finance subcommittee?
Our next meeting is next Tuesday, June fourteenth.
Okay, and G, public safety, communications subcommittee?
Okay, although the committee hasn't been a while, I did talk to Chief Halloran today to get an update. I think things are moving along really well. The contract with Homeland Towers has been received, I know Mike has that in his possession now, I don't know if the town attorney's reviewed that. Chief Halloran received an email today from ARX, they're on course, they're actually going to start, they call it stacking the tower, which I learned means starting to build a tower in July. A number of members of the committee met with a customer design review with Motorola, everything's falling into place, pretty much staying in budget, I think in some cases even a little under budget. So overall, the chief is very pleased with the way things are going, and hopefully we'll get our communication system rolling soon.
Wonderful, thank you. Okay. Moving on to the agenda. All right, and number eight, town manager report, A, update of COVID nineteen testing and vaccines, Michael Bruchel.
Yeah, thank you. There is a full report in your packet. I don't have a lot to report, we'll hopefully be meeting again on Thursday, but I think the notes on page six, or the stats on page six for the cases, North Branford may had ticked up higher than April, month over month, two hundred and twenty-six cases reported, whereas April had a hundred and twenty-nine cases. But hopefully that, that trend is backing off as we enter into June, and we'll continue to, to monitor that and certainly answer any questions you may have.
Okay, thank you, sir. On to B, permanent projects building committee, start off with the MBHS update. We have some folks here from the permanent projects building committee who'd like to come up and give a report, we'd appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. Rose.
Okay, sir.
Al Rose, Forty Valley Road.
Eight Flumbo, seventy-seven Glen Meadow.
And I'm sure Victor will chime in too.
Hi, Victor, how are you?
So first of all, you know, we're, we're still meeting every Monday. We got out at eleven fifteen last night. Is that correct, Michelle?
I, I lose count.
Right around there. We have lively meetings.
Yes.
I'm, I'm amazed at the work that our mechanical experts on the committee put into trying to make sure that we have a, that we don't have another intermediate school. It's, it's amazing the hours that these guys are putting in to try and make sure that we're not getting beat, because, believe me, it's been a rude awakening to me how these big commercial contractors want to go fast, beg for forgiveness after they've already done things, and charge us money every which way they can. And it's, it's really hard to, it's really hard to keep up. You know, it's not doom and gloom, but it's, it's really hard to keep up. These guys are, you know, they're professional, not only are they professional builders, they're professional.
Artists.
They're professional moneymakers, yeah. I mean, I know, I know a bunch of you had heard about the issues we had with the duct work and the way it was hung, and, and we, our group dug in their heels, and, and we even had talked to some counselors, like, hey, we're gonna, we're, and the one member who really is, you know, in the mechanical side, he was adamant against it, so we all, we all stood with him, and, you know, we dug in, and, and, you know, two to three weeks later, when we kept asking, like, okay, so if you're going to do it this way, and the way we read it, it's not in the specs, but it was in the boilerplate. And so just simply, they listed five ways you could hang the ducts. And then it said, also meeting the industry standard. So in the industry standard, you can do this sixth way that they did, but it wasn't one of the five that was spec. And, and believe me, the whole, the design team, the builder, the contractor, were all against us, we still didn't move, and, and we just kept asking, I don't know who came up with it, someone says, okay, so if it's a Hilti anchoring device, we want a letter from Hilti saying that it's right. Well, guess what we got from Hilti? We're not telling you that it's right. So, anyway, long story short, as soon as nobody would stand behind the method, then the design team finally backed us up, and, and we got them changed to the way that we wanted, at no cost to the town. So that's, but that's just one of the many things that, that, that we deal with every, every, every week. And, and all of us, when we're walking out at the end of the meeting, we're like, you know, so, so we have vowed not to come back before you and ask for one penny, but I'm telling you, we're, we're trying to figure out how to make it work, because they are, they are masters at, oh, this is extra because. And then even, and, and I got to tell you, COVID, and, and, you know, one of us at the last meeting said, how is, how are these COVID issues the taxpayer of North Branford's issues? You know, these guys are big boys, they're big contractors, and it's like, so you're, you want us to pay extra money because you expedited something across the country, and it's all about the supply? I mean, they, believe me, they play every angle, and you guys jump in if.
Yeah, every week it's challenging. Every week it's, there's, there's a change order that they bring to us, and we've all now are going to come to them next week, most likely next Monday, or soon enough, that we're not, we don't want any more change orders. You build the school as designed, as spec, do not bring us another change order, because every week it's nickel and diming us to death. And, and quite frankly, this, I mean, there's probably two hundred years of experience that we have, and I'm probably not exaggerating with Victor, Al, myself, Tom, and Luke, you know, the five of us, and, and we talk, and I talk to Al probably three times a day sometimes, Victor a couple times a day, Tom a couple times a day. You know, we're finding stuff on a regular basis. If it's not on our walkthrough, it's on our Monday night meetings. Gil Bayne would love us to meet every month, so they can just be a money machine and push this thing down the road. We refuse to meet, you know, we don't meet, we meet every, every week still, but they, they alternate their weeks now with the PD, because we're, you know, doing with that right now. Rusty's here on a regular basis, but, you know, on our walkthroughs, it, we find, we find a lot of issues. You know, CSNE, you know, our third-party consultant and our clerk of the works, quite frankly, we've, we found things last night that, I, I mean, I don't think any one of us are happy about, you know, that haven't been corrected from the month of May, so.
But isn't that the job of the C, of C, the, our eyes and ears?
Of Gil Bayne.
CSI.
And CSG.
Yeah, CSG.
My problem with Gil Bayne is, quite frankly, I don't think they have enough experience on the job. They got, you know, a couple of guys on this job that I, quite frankly, don't think that, that have the knowledge, or they're too friendly with the contractors, and they're not going to raise a red flag. Yes, they should be on, you know, we have eyes and ears on the job, but not every day, all day long, so.
So the clerk of the works isn't coming back? I know there's been a change there, has that gone along?
Marty's left, and.
John.
John is, is now in place. He's up to speed, he's, he's, you know, he's, he's okay.
They're trying to close things up before people can have eyes on.
I'm sorry?
They're trying to close things up before people.
Yeah, I mean, they would love to close up and move along, and then say, hey, you guys, you know, you know, we got to go back, it's a change order.
And some of the things may not, may have been corrected, but the paperwork we had last night, you know, it had, our, our third-party inspector had this, had these issues, and he had them all the way back to like, May sixth, or, yeah.
May twelfth.
And then there's columns, like contractor response, recommended change, recommended repair.
Deficiency report.
Yeah, the deficiency report, and we just have a blank column. It's like, so we said to him, we said, well, these guys are putting brick up, and there were a lot of issues, there were a lot of issues with the waterproofing behind the brick.
Hence, we don't want another issue of.
Which, you know, it's going to cost us a lot of money on the last school. And so when we, we asked them, like, what's, was this corrected? You know, because these guys just keep going. They just, you know, the guy sees that something's wrong, and they keep laying brick, and, I mean, we're going there.
It's Thursday for.
Thursday again, but, I mean, as, as volunteer group, I mean, I think Tom gets there a couple of times a week.
Tom's there a couple of times a week, I was with Tom last week, we'll all be there this week.
At first, we were trying to go once every two weeks, but we have to, we're going to, we're going to start going.
We're all going to take a couple of days off of work and kind of.
Yeah, I mean.
That's about the time you guys were giving to us.
It was, you know, I'm sure he said it jokingly, but, so when we called them out on these things that we didn't have answers to, and, and I prefaced it with, okay, maybe there are answers, but we didn't get them, so don't give it to us and think we're not going to be upset about it, you know, so if there's answers, don't give us the problems without the corrections.
There was twenty deficiency issues on this report, and a contractor's response. There was 20 deficiency issues on this report and a contractor's response, completely blank. You've given us a report with nothing to go back.
So is there any, can you check with, because we have John, or Jeff DiNoffrio as the attorney, right, for the building projects? So is there any way that you can check with him to say, listen, can we get it? Like you get it in the minutes and Gil Bane knows that if you don't have those answers and there's a problem down the road, it doesn't come back to us as a change order. They need to fix it or prove to you that it was fixed at their expense. I think we need to, I mean, I am so upset about the whole NBIS and the cost and we don't even know if that's a true cost of 7 million.
We don't even know what we're gonna get into yet, right?
Right. That you guys have every right to hold their feet to the fire. I mean, I was at the building committee meeting a week ago, not this past week. And, I mean, they don't care because they are not taxpayers in this town. They're just looking at the money and how much they can get. And I know there's the contingency fund that you guys came and asked and we gave you the additional $4 million. I don't know how much is left of that $4 million, but there's a whole hell of a lot of school to build yet.
That's right.
And I know there's a contingency for the owner or the rep. Gil Bane has a contingency.
It's 1.7, I think I was told.
No, it's 2,475,000 we had last.
Yeah, on our side.
1,233,000 and theirs. The issue is, we did talk to Jeff DiNoffrio, all in a meeting, and we are gonna hold their feet to the fire. The problem is, it's 20, 30 of them a week. We're pretty beat up. So Jeff's best answer for Jeff DiNoffrio was.
Well, before you, wait, wait, hold on, before you, just be careful if there's legal advice going to the committee. We're now at a public meeting where I just, we want to be a little careful maybe, perhaps, what we're talking about. If we could just caution you a little bit with that.
No, no legal advice. His opinion was, we can argue and they can appeal it at the end and he'll handle it at the end. So we just got a change order. We, I kind of brought it up last night because I was reading through some of the finances and found $25,000 to $30,000 I account for. We'll come to find out, they said that they changed the windows to the side windows that somebody wanted. They said our chief and deputy chief asked for them. Am I wrong, guys?
Correct.
I asked the chief and I just asked the deputy chief. They don't even know what I'm talking about.
And then we went through.
We gotta distinguish what's right, what's legal, and who's lying.
Well, I, because I know that there were some previous issues on items that were changed not by Permanent Project. It didn't come before you. It was done at the school level because I just saw, the board of ed just made the motions to approve those changes, which I believe was a directive from Permanent Project to them, just so that all of the loops were closed. But that really has to be made known that those changes, if it doesn't come from Permanent Project, it's not a change. I don't care who it is.
Everything has to come through this Permanent Projects Group.
Correct.
Any change.
Doesn't matter.
So could I, just to clarify, you would like it to be brought to Attorney DiNoffrio for language regarding any issues brought forth so that they will be corrected?
That's correct.
And proof of correction, otherwise it will be on their, at their expense.
Well, to consult with the attorney as to what can be done. I mean, I, you know, maybe there's nothing, I don't know, but that's because the building committee, that's the attorney for the building committee?
Correct.
I'm just asking if they can talk to him about that and see.
And between the whole group, I mean, we find things, the five of us find things weekly. And, you know, we find tremendous amounts of savings that they, and we challenge them at everything. And I think Gil Bane's pretty clear, I would, I mean, to Al and Vic, that they know we're holding their feet to the fire. And we challenge them.
But it seems to keep on happening. Like, it doesn't matter how much you challenge them, they just.
They continue to try to.
They keep doing it.
You have to understand the business model itself is to get, for them, their goal is time over effort, right? They want to minimize the effort and minimize the time and get done with it.
They're a money machine.
They're a money, they're a profit company that wants to get done with the school.
And they're moving, they're moving fast.
They are.
And NBIS is a perfect example.
Perfect, right. We're suffering with that and I'm not sure what, I said that a few times. I'm not really sure what we're gonna see when we get into this.
Yeah, it's gonna open up Pandora's box.
Guys, I have one question because we went back and forth between clerk of the works and project management companies and stuff like that. For some of these future projects, do you see with what you guys are dealing with? And would it be, would it be easier on you guys had we hired a project management company? Or do you think a lot of the same stuff still would have happened or is there some?
So see, Gil Bane is a project manager in this, in this case. And so we called them out last night saying, and if, and if you remember, and maybe you weren't there, you might have been there. When we were gonna hire a clerk of the works, Gil Bane said, oh, you don't need, you have us.
We've got that.
We got our.
You have us. You don't need one.
So yeah, you have the San Asylum being run by a crazy.
So we said last night after everything that's been wrong and when Victor or Lou or Tom on the mechanical side walked through the building and see something that's obviously wrong, and it's like, well, they, we have two supervisors from Gil Bane there. So last night, you know, we said to them, I'm gonna include you guys in. Believe me, Michelle can tell you.
These are town meetings here compared to ours.
So we said to them, we said, you guys, it's obvious that you don't have the experience on the job to see these things. And, you know, you need to, you need to come up with experienced guys that can pick this stuff up, that these guys pick it up. And the response from the, from Gil Bane was, you're looking for a unicorn.
So have you lost confidence in their ability to do this right?
No, no. Yeah, it's not doom and gloom.
Yes, it's just, they're a money machine.
Every one of us is working hard around trying to build a good high school than we do in our own businesses.
But they did say that people have to be there. If they're not, if someone's not there every day, they're not gonna stop. If there's an issue, they're gonna close it up.
Rusty's on the job, CSNG's on the job, CES is on the job multiple times a week. We're doing walkthroughs multiple times a week. You know, Gil Bane, if they had their way, they'd see us once a month and bring up all the problems there.
I encourage you that you press on clerk of the works to, they're being paid to be our eyes. And you guys have done, I know firsthand the amount of work that you've done when I was there. And I get reports regularly from folks on the committee on what you're doing now.
Did you want to talk to them?
They're not used to this having.
I'm so happy you guys are speaking together and backing each other up.
But I also don't want to see atrophy. You have another two years of building this school. We have phase one, then we have phase two, and then phase three is really the aesthetics part of it. But I could tell that it's, anyone would have atrophy after a period of time.
Well, it doesn't end on a Monday night. You know, we do three, four, or five hours on a Monday and all of us carry it through the entire week. And we're not complaining about it, but it's not just a Monday night. We probably put in 15, 20 hours a week, you know, between meetings, talking, walkthroughs, you know, backing it around. So if we weren't, you know, I'm sure that we're gonna get the best possible projects here without a doubt.
Do you want to talk about the electric?
So they had an issue with the project, it's gonna delay the project until opening of the first half of the school until April 23rd, 2023. So we came up with a scenario, worked with the engineers on behalf of the permanent project building committee. We all got down, we met. We came up with a temporary resolution for the gear. It has to get redesigned. But even that to work through, it's like they're actually going in between each other and who's gonna give a change order to each other to draw. To engineer it. And the only suggestion I would make is possibly, I don't know how we pay our building official, but I had asked him several times to come and he finally came last night. He was taken back and he was taking, he must have took 30, 40 notes. If he can attend once a month and the town can afford to pay him for that, that would give him the opportunity and the latitude to go to these jobs. Because we're catching 15 to 20 mistakes a week that have to be corrected. This ain't like two or three.
Michael, if you could have conversation, just make sure that at least once a month, he's there. That's a very good point and it's well taken.
He did. He took a lot of notes. He was very taken back. He called me the next day. I talked to him on behalf of Al, David, and all of them, just in contact with him over the temporary power. He's still gotta get that signed off by the state. He's gotta get a modification. There's a process there. So I just want you to be aware, is there a potential of it being delayed? It's on them. And we paid an additional $300,000 in delays, but we are fully aware of, we're going back to get that.
Well, this is already delayed. It was, you know, December was a compromise. It was supposed to be the full.